All right. Welcome. Welcome to our town meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence in memory of all of our deceased local public servants who have passed away over the last year. Any firefighter, teacher, police officer, town hall worker, TPW employee, any elected or appointed officials or town employees, let us pray. Thank you. You may be seated. Tonight, we actually have two meetings. The first is a special town meeting to discuss one article only. And the quorum for that meeting is 15 people, and as you can see, we have enough. Immediately after that meeting, we will begin the annual town meeting with many articles to discuss. And that quorum will be 20 people, and as you can see, we have about 90 people present. To start off, I'd like to introduce the people who spent the last year creating the budget and implementing a spending plan that brought us to this point tonight. Members of the Clinton Finance Committee, co-chairs Bill McGrae and Bob Latini, Ed Powers, Paul Cherabini, Aaron Powell, and Mike Chakonsky. Thank you for your service to this town. Members of the Select Board, Chair Sean Kerrigan, John Busno, Matt Kobus, Ed DeValt, and William Conley Jr. Thank you for your service to our community. As many of you know, Mr. Conley did not seek reelection this year, and I know you join with me in thanking Bill for his many, many years of dedication to this community. He's been a member of the Parks and Rec Commission, the School Committee, the Finance Committee, and the Select Board. You start to wonder, how much can one guy take? You know? Ladies and gentlemen, we wish the very best to Selectman Bill Conley.
Mr. Moderator, if I may, just, I want to say thank you to you, the voters, for giving me the opportunity to do this job for all these years. Thank you very much.
Also with us tonight, Michael Ward, Town Administrator, Bob Gibbons, Town Solicitor, Julie Kilbride is back for tonight's meeting only as Secretary, and I'm Terry Ngano, and I'll be your moderator tonight. Let's remind you of the rules for tonight's meeting. All questions, comments, or discussions should be directed to me. If I can't answer it, I will direct your question to the appropriate person for a response. I will try my best to explain some of the more complicated articles, as I understand them, but if that is not sufficient, we will bring up the sponsor of that article to explain things to you. To speak tonight, raise your hand, wait to be recognized, and then come forward to the microphone. Please, no personalities in your remarks, and let's keep our discussion focused on the article in question only. The only votes I will count are those seated in the hall. The only people in the hall right now should be registered voters in the Town of Clinton or some non-residents and others who I've given permission to be here. All proposed amendments must be presented to me in writing, and unless I hear an objection, I will dispense with the formal reading of the warrant. So let's now open the special town meeting. There's only one article.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from the Water Sewer Enterprise Fund retained earnings, the amount of $110,000, said sum to increase the fiscal year 2021 Water Sewer miscellaneous expense line item from $130,000 to $240,000.
Second.
Thank you. So Article One simply transfers money from one account to the other to get us through this year to the end of June. Any questions, comments, or discussion? There being none, all in favor, raise your card, please. And opposed? The article is approved.
Mr. Moderator, I move we adjourn the special town meeting.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn the meeting. All in favor of adjournment, but don't go anyplace. Aye. And opposed? Of course not. All right, here we go. Now it's time to start the annual town meeting. And so I guess we're ready to roll.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to receive the reports of the town officers.
Second.
Article One is to officially accept the annual reports from each town department. Questions, comments, discussion? There being none, all in favor? Cards up? And opposed? Thank you. The article is approved. Article Two.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to fix the salaries and compensation of all elective officials of the town as provided by Chapter 41, Section 108 of the Massachusetts General Laws. Said salaries and compensation to be effective from July 1st, 2021, to June 30th, 2022, and to raise and appropriate a sum of money therefore.
Second.
All right, Article Two simply fixes the salaries and compensation, allows us to pay elected officials for their work during the year. Questions, comments? There being none, all in favor? Cards up? And opposed? Thank you. The article is approved.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate from the current tax levy, the sum of $48,940,238, and to appropriate and transfer the sum of $6,786, and to raise and appropriate the sum of $534,596 from the Ambulance Enterprise Fund, and to appropriate, gosh, yep, and to appropriate from the Ambulance Enterprise Fund retained earnings, the sum of $67,225, and to appropriate and transfer the sum of $182,352, and raise and appropriate the sum of $2381,482 from the Water Sewer Enterprise Fund, and to appropriate from the Water Sewer Enterprise retained earnings, the sum of $181,024, and to appropriate and transfer the sum of $21,230, and raise and appropriate the sum of $671,015 from the Rubbish Enterprise Fund, and to appropriate from the Rubbish Enterprise Fund retained earnings, the sum of $41,000, and to appropriate and transfer the sum of $32,650, and raise and appropriate the sum of $1,121,847 from the Landfill Enterprise Fund, said sums to be used to defray town charges from July 1st, 2021, to June 30th, 2022, as those charges appear in Finance Committee Report of Recommendations.
Second.
Wow, what a multiple, huh? How about that? All right, Article Three is your budget. So normally what we do is go to the back of your warrant and find the proposed budget. So turn to the appendix, and I'll go through each department very quickly. If you have any questions or comments, feel free to be recognized, and we'll give everyone a chance to look it over, and I'll also give you time at the very end as well. So let us begin, and we'll kind of give a few seconds in between. Obviously, you're really voting on the final column. The column on the far right is the Finance Committee approved. On the far left is the budget from last year, and you'll find a lot of these haven't changed one bit. So Moderator, Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, Town Accountant, Board of Assessors, Treasurer Collector, Parking Fines, Town Solicitor, Town Clerk, Conservation Commission, Planning Board, Zoning Board, Monticic Planning Commission, Economic Development, Insurance and Miscellaneous, and we have your Police Department. Goes on to the next page. Your Fire Department, Building Inspector, Gas Plumbing Inspectors, Sealer of Weights and Measures, Electrical Inspector, Emergency Management, Animal Control Officer, School Department, Department of Public Works, Board of Health. I just want to interrupt that train of thought for a second to just thank the Board of Health for their work this past couple of years. I think people used to think that job was really not much of a, you know, didn't matter much. Well, it certainly has mattered over the last couple of years. They've done a great job. Council on Aging, Department of Veteran Services, Bigelow Public Library, Parks and Recreation. Fuller Field Commission has been moved under Facilities, which is coming up. Human Resources, Facilities and Grounds Department, and then a host of smaller departments in the next section. Then we have the balances of our enterprise funds. The first one, number 232, Ambulance Enterprise, Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund, Rubbish Enterprise Fund, Landfill Enterprise Fund. And the last section is, top of the page would be the budget summary of everything we just went through, followed by our sources of funding and where the money comes from all the way through to the last page. And why don't I give you a minute or so to look that over one more time, and if there's any questions about the overall budget, then I'll call upon the correct people to answer Or anything we need to go back to? All right, questions, comments, or discussions on any of that? If not, all in favor, raise your card now, please. And opposed? The article is approved.
Mr. Moderator, I move to reconsider Article Three.
Second.
All right, there's been a motion to reconsider the article you just voted on. So just a quick reminder, if you vote in favor of reconsideration, you nullify what you just voted on, and we start discussion all over again about that last article. If you are opposed to reconsideration, the last vote stands as you just voted, and this article cannot be brought up again at town meeting. Everybody got that? So all those in favor of reconsidering the article and re-discussing it, hands up, please. Cards up. And those opposed to reconsideration, cards up. Thank you. Reconsideration is defeated, and we cannot talk about that article again this evening. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the Town Treasurer and Town Collector to enter into compensating balance agreement with a banking institution for fiscal year 2022 pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 53F of the Massachusetts General Law.
Second.
All right, Article Four just simply allows town officials to put your money in an interest-bearing account. Questions, comments? There being none, all in favor? And opposed? Thank you. The article is passed.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $4,800, said sum to be expended for social services in accordance with programs as approved by the Board of Selectmen.
Second.
All right, Article Five is just our annual standard contribution to local social services. Questions or comments? There being none, all in favor? Cards up? And opposed? The article is approved.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $20,000, said sum to be expended as the Town of Clinton's share to the Wachusett Health Education Action Team, WITES Incorporated, which committee is a delegate agency of the United Way of Tri County.
Second.
Article Six is simply the town's annual assessment to WITES. Questions, comments? There being none, all in favor? Cards up? And opposed? Thank you. The article is approved. Article Seven.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half of the Massachusetts General Laws to set the limits on the total amounts that may be expended from each of the town's revolving funds established under the town's administrative bylaws. Gas plumbing inspection, $50,000. Council on Aging, $20,000. Town Hall use, $5,000. Old Home Day, $25,000. Fuller Field, $5,000. Town Clerk, $15,000.
Second.
All right, this is, Article Seven is simply the annual article, looks the same every year, and it just sets the limits on the amount of money that various groups can take out of their revolving account per year. Questions, comments? If not, all in favor? Hands up? Cards up? And opposed? The article is approved. Article Eight.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate from the Assessor's Overlay Reserve Account the sum of $30,000, said sum to be used to continue the senior tax rebate program for fiscal year 2022.
Second.
Article Eight simply moves money to the senior tax rebate program so that senior citizens can work off, you could say, part of their taxes. Questions, comments? There being none, all in favor? Cards up? And opposed? Thank you. The article is approved.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from available free cash the sum of $3,262.60, said sum to be expended by the Board of Selectmen for the following unpaid bills. Reagan and E. Zoll Memorials, $2,800. National Grid, $462.60.
Second.
These are unpaid bills, and by statute requires a four-fifths vote. Questions or comments? There being none, all in favor? And opposed? Thank you. The article is approved.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to close out the unexpected balances of the following warrant articles to the general fund. Landfill Monitor, Article Nine, 2003 Annual Town Meeting, $406.38. Message Board, Article Eight, 2010 Annual Town Meeting, $1,500. Land Easements, Article Four, 2003 Annual Town Meeting, $13,000, $13,010.25.
Second.
All right, this article is really more of a housekeeping article, and all that money that you see there represents leftover money after projects were done. And so what they're trying to do is clear those accounts, and the money which was never spent will now go back into the general fund. Questions, comments? There being none, all in favor? And opposed? Thank you. The article is approved.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to rescind the borrowing authorization of $208,000, $208,500 from Article 23 of the 2016 Annual Town Meeting for the purchase of open space, whereas this project was funded by a state grant.
Second.
So Article 11, at the 2016 town meeting, you approved the borrowing of money. However, the money mentioned was never borrowed in the first place because we got a grant to fund that. So now we need to sort of rescind your vote from 2016. That's what we're doing here. Questions or comments? There being none, all in favor? And opposed? Thank you. The article is approved.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from available free cash the sum of $150,000 to the Health Insurance Trust Fund.
Second.
$150,000 coming out of free cash and going into the Health Insurance Trust Fund. Questions, comments? There being none, all in favor? And opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from free cash the sum of $150,000 to the Stabilization Fund.
Second.
All right, Article 13, again, $150,000 from free cash goes into the Stabilization Fund. Questions, comments? There being none, all in favor? And opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from the Landfill Enterprise Fund retained earnings, the sum of $3,200,000 to the Capital Projects and Infrastructure Improvement Stabilization Fund.
Second.
All right, this is money already earned in the Landfill Enterprise Fund, and we want to move it over to the Capital Projects account so we can actually use it for projects. Questions, comments? There being none, all in favor? And opposed? Thank you. Article 14 is approved.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate from the Peg Access and Cable Related Fund the sum of $175,000, said sum to be used for the support of cable access-related services, programming, and equipment.
Second.
So we take $175,000 from the Cable TV account in order to purchase new equipment and to run the studio for the coming year. Questions, comments? All in favor? And opposed? Thank you. The article is approved.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from available free cash the sum of $50,000, said sum to be expended by the Fire Department to fund retroactive wages as part of a negotiated agreement between the Town of Clinton through the Board of Selectmen and the International Association of Firefighters, Local 3189, for the period July 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2021, having been negotiated in accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter 150E, as amended.
Second.
All right, this article is very similar to the next one coming up. It's $50,000 from free cash, so it's already in the town coffers, and in order to pay retroactive raises, which would be for this year. The future raises, or a raise that's already been negotiated, would be in the budget you have just approved a few minutes ago. So this is for retroactive raises, Fire Department. Questions, comments? There being none. All in favor? And opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from available free cash the sum of $68,800, said sum to be expended by the Police Chief to fund retroactive wages as part of a negotiated agreement between the Town of Clinton through the Board of Selectmen and the Massachusetts Coalition of Police, Local 151, for the period July 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2021, having been negotiated in accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter 150E, as amended.
Second.
All right, same thing. This is $68,800 comes already from the town coffers under free cash and goes to retroactive raises for this year, and we're all set for next year because of the budget you just passed. Questions, comments? There being none, all in favor? And opposed? Thank you. The article passes.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $1 million, said sum to be expended under the direction of Permanent Building Committee for the purpose of paying costs of a feasibility study regarding the Clinton Middle School, 100 West Boylson Street, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto, and for which the town may be eligible for a grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority. To meet this appropriation, the Treasurer Collector, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44, or pursuant to any other enabling authority. The town acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA, and any costs the town incurs in connection with the feasibility study that are in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the town, and that the costs and amount of borrowing authorized pursuant to this vote shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in feasibility study agreement that may be executed between the town and the MSBA. Any premium received upon sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, less any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
Second.
All right, so this is the borrowing article, and we're going to need a two-thirds vote. This, of course, will pay for a feasibility study, which is the step one, the first step you have to take if you're looking into a new school situation. Doesn't have to be necessarily a new school situation. Might be, the idea is professionals come in and they look at various alternatives. Do we need a brand-new middle school? Can we have additions put on to the school instead? What are the alternatives? What is the good and the bad? Do we need this or not? Questions or comments? I, yes. They're next.
Hi, I'm Mariah Hutt McGar for Walden Terrace. Mr. Ngano, I understand the grant is for the building of the middle school, the grant that's in the million-dollar article, so we have to spend a million dollars out of the town to actually get a look at the building, and if we get a grant, the building will be paid for the grant, but the million dollars is not part of the grant. Is that correct?
I'm going to have your Superintendent of Schools answer that. I will tell you that, obviously, I think our reimbursement is now like 75%. So if we did borrow a million, we may have to pay back $300,000. But I'll have Steve answer that. This is Dr. Steve Meyer, your Superintendent of Schools. He doesn't belong in Clinton, but I've allowed him to be here to speak.
Thank you. No, so you might have heard, I did mention that once at a meeting early in this process, but since we have been invited into the eligibility period with them, we have clarified that with them, we are eligible for reimbursement for the entire feasibility study. So although we have to approve a million dollars to fund the entire study, our current reimbursement rate's about 74.79, whatever it was, just about 75%. So we would anticipate the net cost of town would be, conservatively, I said somewhere between $250,000 and $300,000 at the end.
Any other questions or comments before we vote? Thank you.
Wendy Neal, 8 Colonial Drive. I'm all for the feasibility study, and I think it's a great idea, and I want to either renovate or get a new middle school, but my only question is, we just did a feasibility study for the library, and it was about $45,000. So even if we're getting the money back, and I understand it's a bigger building, it might be a little more, I'm just, to go from, it was either 45 or 50, to go from that number to a million for a feasibility study is where my question is.
So I think when they're looking at a new school building, the more options you look at, the more you add to a feasibility study. So if you're looking at the potential of building, like a brand-new building, they've got to factor in, like, where would that be? What would we do with the old building? What would we have to do if there were fields we lost and we'd have to replace? They'd look at also another scenario, what if we were going to keep the existing building? What would it cost to bring that building up to code and modernize renovations to make sure that it's feasible to use that building? The scope, once we determine the final scope of the feasibility study, it'll determine the overall price. So right now, it's really, if you think about the million dollars, it's more of a placeholder, it's on more of the high end, because we need to get, that's one of the steps during the eligibility phase, is we need to get the funding approved. Once we look through and we start working with the project manager through the MSBA, we'll be able to set some of the parameters for the feasibility study. So other towns, where that number came from, it's based on what other towns have spent. it's based on what other towns have spent. But, like I said, it's more expensive. If you're looking at, you know, four different sites, and you need to have soil samples and everything taken at four different sites, it gets a lot more expensive.
Any other questions or comments? All right, there being none, all in favor of Article 18? Raise your card now. Thank you. And opposed? Thank you. The article is approved.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from the Landfill Enterprise Fund retained earnings to the sum of $3,100,000 to the Landfill Enterprise Fund Closure Reserve Line Item.
Second.
All right, Article 19. This simply transfers money from the earnings of the Landfill Enterprise Fund to the Closure Reserve Line. So once again, actually spend the money to close out this project and cap the landfill. Questions, comments, or discussion? There being none, all in favor and opposed. Thank you. The article is approved. We're on Article 20 already. All right.
Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from the Landfill Enterprise Fund Closure Reserve Line Item to the sum of $3,000,000, said some to be used for the Phase 1 and Phase 2 landfill closure and South Meadow Pond dredging project and all related work.
Second.
All right, so this is the money that's been moved, and now we need to appropriate it to do the work of dredging that part of the pond close to the old Dunkinson's Grove area. Questions, comments? There being none, all in favor and opposed. Thank you. The article is approved.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from the Capital Projects and Infrastructure Improvements Stabilization Fund to the sum of $2,000,000, said some to be expended by the Department of Public Works for road resurfacing and infrastructure improvements as approved by the Board of Selectmen.
Second.
All right, so this money was at one time in the landfill account. Then it's been moved to the Capital Projects account. And now, once again, we need to use that money, and we want to use it for several different projects, mostly for road resurfacing, which I think many of us would agree is probably needed. Questions, comments? There being none, all in favor and opposed. Thank you. The article passed.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from the Capital Projects and Infrastructure Improvements Stabiliz- I just did that one, 21, sorry. 22, Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to borrow through the Water Sewer Enterprise Fund to the sum of $2,000,000, said some to be expended by the Department of Public Works for sewer system inflow and infiltration improvements, including all incidental and related costs. The Treasurer Collector, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Mass. General Laws Chapter 44 or pursuant to any other enabling authority. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, less any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Mass. General Laws Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by like amounts.
Second.
All right, so what we're doing is we need to use, we need to have some money in order to correct and to fix up our sewer system and what they call I&amp;I improvements for inflow and infiltration improvements. Questions, comments? If not, there being none, all in favor and opposed. Thank you. The article is approved.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the appropriation authorization under Article 21 of the 2019 Annual Town Meeting to allow the balance of $49,860.43 from the Drainage Improvement Project to be used for storm water system permit requirements.
Second.
All right, so we're talking about $49,000, which was left over after projects were completed. And because of the scope of that article, if I recall, it was specific to certain streets or certain areas. And that means that the money that's left over can't be used for any other street. So now, what we want to do is move that money so that we can do some general improvements on streets that weren't mentioned during the past few years' article. I probably complicated that more than it needed to be, but whatever. Questions, comments, or discussion? All in favor and opposed? That passed even with me screwing that up that much. That was pretty good. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from available free cash to the sum of $65,000, said some to be expended by the Department of Public Works for the purchase of an F-550 utility body truck.
Second.
All right, $65,000 from free cash for a new truck for the DPW. Questions, comments, or discussion? There being none, all in favor and opposed? Thank you. The article is approved.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from available free cash to the sum of $65,000, said some to be expended by the Department of Facilities and Grounds for the purchase of an F-550 utility body truck.
Second.
Once again, $65,000 from free cash for a new truck for the Facilities Department. Questions, comments? There being none, all in favor and opposed? Thank you. The article is approved.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from available free cash to the sum of $100,000, said some to be expended by the Department of Facilities and Grounds for beautification of the downtown business district.
Second.
All right, Article 26. It allows us to take $100,000 from free cash to the Facilities Department to help defray the cost of beautification projects in our new downtown area. Now, I know right now it seems to be a mess, but we know this is going to be absolutely gorgeous when it's done. It's going to be beautiful. And now we need to make sure we keep it that way. So we're looking for this amount of money for things such as holiday decorations, banners, seasonal flowers, maintaining benches and things like that. Very much needed, and I think it'll obviously improve downtown. Questions, comments? There being none, all in favor and opposed? Thank you very much. The article is approved.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from available free cash to the sum of $60,000, said some to be expended by the Fire Chief for purchase of a new chief vehicle.
Second.
$60,000 from free cash for a new chief's vehicle. Questions or comments? There being none, all in favor and opposed? Thank you. The article is approved.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 20 of the Massachusetts General Laws, the $144,589.39 balance from the Rousher Farm purchase authorized under Article 10 of the 2007 Annual Town Meeting to be used to construct a universal access walkway, an observation area providing a view of Clamshell Pond, and a designated handicap parking area at town-owned Rousher Farm. Such construction to meet the specifications of the Americans with Disabilities Act. Furthermore, to construct a second parking area in the vicinity not designed to be an ADA compliance. This project, titled "The Path to Clamshell Pond", is necessary to enable everyone in our community to have access to a part of Rousher Farm.
Second.
All right, this money represents original money from the first project, when we bought Rousher Farm to begin with. We secured Rousher Farm. And now we have money left over, about $144,000. And now, at once, the group wants it to be used for some ADA work, for ADA work on a parking lot, in the paths up there, and obviously, so that everybody can enjoy that wonderful area. Questions, comments, or discussion? There being none, all in favor and opposed? Thank you. The article is approved. Motion to reconsider. All right, is there a second?
Second.
Second. All right, once again, if you vote yes to reconsider, we reread the article, we discuss it some more, we re-vote. If you vote no on reconsider, what you voted for is over and done with and cannot be brought up again. All those in favor of reconsideration, raise your card now. And opposed? All right, reconsideration is defeated, and the article stands as approved.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept the following roads as public ways and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the Massachusetts General Court for a special act to authorize the acceptance of these roads as public ways in the Town of Clinton, if required, notwithstanding any general or special acts of the contrary, provided, however, that the General Court may make clerical or editorial changes of form only to the bill, unless the Board of Selectmen approves amendments thereto before enactment by the General Court, which amendments shall be within the public purposes of said petition. Ash Street, Benefit Street, Candace Street, Clamshell Road, Forest Street, Francis Street, Lane Avenue, Liberty Street, Mayflower Drive, McMahon Avenue, Milton Avenue, Miles Standish Road, Oak Court, Richardson Place, Rigby Place, Ring Street, Robert Street Extension, South Meadow Road, Spring Street, Walden Terrace, West Boylston Street, Doggett Lane, Fuller Street, Gabby Lane, Layton Avenue, .101 miles of Berland Street, .034 miles of Lorraine Avenue, .348 miles of Willow Street, .246 miles of Eileen Avenue, .041 miles of Sterling Street, and .124 miles of Worcester Street.
Second.
This article is really not as complicated as it appears. It's really, again, more of a housekeeping article. The exact same article was approved by you people in 2017. But like all of these articles, it has to be sent to Boston. It has to be acted upon in Boston for like a final approval. And the time lapsed on it, and it simply did not get done in the time required. So because of that, we kind of have to do it all over again. Some of these roads have been around for a long, long time. These are all public ways, or they have been used as public ways for many, many years. Questions, comments, or discussion?
I am Ron Sonu on 30 Willow Street. My question is simple. I would like to know what the .348 miles of Willow Street is and the Section 041 of Sterling Street.
Well, .34 miles. I don't know who could answer that, but I'm going to guess, Ron, that Willow Street, which is where you live, you know that little extension that goes just beyond when you take a right and end up at the top of Sterling Street? Probably what that little tiny extension was never accepted. So now we're trying to cover our bases and make sure it's accepted. Sterling Street? That's a good one. Every one of these has to be accepted. They're probably already plowed and everything. They're taken care of by the town. So I cannot answer that. I don't know if anybody can. You want to try that, Chris?
Chris McGann, the DPW Superintendent. That section of Sterling Street would be where the old tunnel was underneath the railroad tracks, because that section was built after the fact. So the road had been accepted up to that point, but that stretch that now you can drive over to the railroad tracks, I don't know how many of you remember before you couldn't do that. It used to have to, there was actually a tunnel that went under it, but you couldn't drive there, but that's what that's for, Sterling Street.
I remember that tunnel very well. That answer your question? All right. Any other discussion on this? There being none, all in favor, hands up and opposed? Thank you. The article is accepted.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to amend Article 11 of the Administrative Bylaws by adding the following new section to read, "In addition to the requirements of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 148, Sections 26E and 26F, upon the sale of any residential property, regardless of the year built, such residential property shall be equipped with smoke detectors in all sleeping areas."
Second.
So this article came from your Fire Chief, and it's a form of extra safety. It's an extra safety measure that will just require smoke detectors in every bedroom, regardless of the age of the home. Questions, comments, or discussion? There being none, all in favor and opposed? Thank you. The article is approved.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the Personnel Bylaws, Section 3.2 to 3.3, or, sorry, Section 3.2-3, by deleting the Personnel Board and replacing it with Town Administrator in the second sentence as the entity to approve or disapprove the starting rate for new employee appointments.
Second.
All right, so Article 31. This article will change the procedure when a non-union, and I hope I understand this right, when a non-union town position is filled. Instead of approval from the Personnel Board, the article would give the Town Administrator the power to approve or disapprove the new starting rate of pay. Questions, comments, or discussion?
Mr. Moderator. Sorry, is someone out there? Yeah. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
This is Bob Palatini on 117 Berland Street. I am a member of the Personnel Board. I would like to have this Article 31 and 32 tabled until further discussion. This thing has been brought to the town floor here without any input or discussion with the Personnel Board.
All right, thank you. So there's a motion to table, but I do want to hear, I think we should hear from others. Somebody else who may want to.
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I just want to reiterate, this amendment does, the Personnel Board will still set and approve salary range for new hires. All this amendment does is give the Town Administrator the flexibility to place new hires within that scale. And the reason that we're recommending this is that in the current setup, in the final days of negotiation, going back and forth with a new hire, we have to continue to keep going to the Personnel Board, and they only meet on so many days. Sometimes there can be days going in between getting approval on different salary ranges. When you're in that stage of negotiations with a new hire, it's very critical to be able to come back with a salary yes or no quickly. And the delay in getting that approval, since I've been on the board, we've lost two candidates to it. And all this would be doing would be bringing this in line with the way that the superintendent deals with hiring teachers. There's a set range, a salary range, that the Personnel Board approves, independent of the Town Administrator. But then, the Town Administrator has the flexibility based on the work experience of the new hire to place that person where they see fit. It's, in my opinion, it's just a much more efficient way. And like I said, because of the delay, and it's no knock on the Personnel Board, but just the way that it is set up, because of that delay, we have lost potential new hire candidates during that time period. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thanks, Ed.
That's all very nice. This could have been done a month ago or two months ago. This was brought up at our meeting last week. And it's not, should not happen. This is a, bringing it back to the old ILOF friends program that we had here for years. And I've been on that board for eight years. We went through three different iterations to get to a grid that would work. The only thing wrong with the grid now is some professionals are underpaid in the grid. But that's also due to the lack of a review that was supposed to have been done three years ago to have this updated with the surrounding towns. So please, don't tell me this is making this more efficient.
So, Bob, you made an official motion to table this?
Yes.
Was there a second of that? Second, all right. So I think we need first to deal with the table issue. If you don't table it, then we'll continue this discussion. If you do, then it's over for the time being. So there was a motion made to table this article, Article 31. There was a second. Is there any other? No, usually there's no discussion on a table. I'm sorry. So all in favor of tabling this article? Raise your card now. And opposed? All right, the article is tabled. And Article 32?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town amend Article 10, Section 1 of the Administrative Bylaws by striking the first three sentences and replacing them with the following language. Quote, "The police department shall consist of a chief of police..."
No.
Sorry, I missed one altogether.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's 33, I apologize.
I'll be giving you the numbers.
My apologies. Article 32, Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the Personnel Bylaw in Section 1.2-1 by deleting the Town Administrator and replacing it with Board of Selectmen as the appointing authority for members of the Personnel Board.
Second.
Mr. Moderator, like the term article 32.
All right. And before we do that, you want to say something?
I would, I'd like to make a motion to reconsider if the tabling of Article 30.
You want to reconsider the last, the last, 31?
I think we would try that, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, let's try that again. All right, we want to reconsider Article 31. All right? That was tabled.
I meant Article 30, I'm sorry, Mr. Moderator. No, excuse me, I apologize. Article 31, you're correct.
Article 31. All right. So, once again, reconsidering. You just voted, and it was clearly a majority vote, that you wanted to table Article 31. Now it's time to reconsider that one more time. If you vote yes to reconsider, then we start this discussion again and we keep it going. If you vote no to reconsider, Article 31 stands as you voted, and it is tabled probably until a future meeting. So all those in favor of reconsidering Article 31, raise your card now. All right, and those opposed to, all right, it is reconsideration failed. So the Article 31 stays tabled, and it cannot be brought up again. Now we're on Article 32, and you've already read it, I believe.
Then we have a second.
Did you want to say something about Article 32?
If I may say something, Mr. Moderator?
Absolutely.
I've been part of a movement for the last 12 years as a selectman to take our Town Administrator position and make it a strong Town Administrator. You've endorsed this process through the years with various amendments and articles and authorizations. The initial organization, once we got a strong Town Administrator position established, was that the Board of Selectmen was going to delegate its appointing authority to the Town Administrator. We had to get your approval to do that, and your approval to have the state legislature authorize that. So as it currently exists, the Board of Selectmen still holds the appointing authority but delegates it to the Town Administrator. In the case of the Personnel Board, it requires disauthorization from you in order to, for the Board, the Board of Selectmen decided that, I'm sorry, I'm getting confusing here, but we decided that the Board of Selectmen should retain the appointing authority for all policy-setting boards in town, and we've executed that with the Town Administrator. He appoints all department heads and all non-union employees in the Town of Clinton. That used to be the appointment of the Board of Selectmen. What we've done is take back the authority for the policymaking boards to create a more direct connection to the Board of Selectmen and the voters who elect the Board of Selectmen as far as setting policy for the town. So this isn't changing any, it's actually putting something back to the way it always was, and it's only about the Personnel Board. All the other policy-setting boards have been put back in the authorization of the Board of Selectmen. So I request you to not table this and at least have a debate on its merits.
Thank you. So Article 32, we're still on, you made a motion to table, and was there a second? Second. All right, so we need to vote now on the table. And if you vote to table it, then we'll end discussion. If you vote not to table it, we'll go back to our discussion again. So all in favor of Article 32, tabling it to a, probably a future meeting, please signify by raising your card now, and opposed to tabling it. All right, opposition wins. So now we're back to discussing it, I guess. We're on Article 32, it will not be tabled. Is there any other questions, comments, or discussion on Article 32?
Selectmen Connolly gave the thing where they're taking back the power that they gave the Town Administrator, which is just the opposite of what 31 was supposed to be doing. So I believe this needs much more discussion, and we're not, we haven't had it. We meet monthly, we've been working tirelessly on this thing for maybe seven or eight years to get it to where everybody in the non-union people have a parity with what they would be getting in the outside world, and this does not do it. You have five, your selectmen up there who have changed from year to year, everything else, there's no continuity. The Board has been meeting regularly and trying to get this thing upgraded, and we want to continue to do so.
Mr. Moderator, if I may, just add a few comments? May I add a few more comments?
We're in discussion.
This doesn't change, if you vote yes for this, doesn't change the makeup of the Personnel Board, it changes who's appointing the Personnel Board, just like we've already changed every other policymaking board in the Town of Clinton. So it would make the Personnel Board no different than the Conservation Commission, the Zoni Board of Appeals, the, there's a list, I don't have it off the top of my head, but it would put the Personnel Board in the same position as all the other appointed boards in the Town of Clinton, and I respectfully request your support for this.
Any other questions, comments, or discussion at this point? I think, go ahead.
One more item to tell you. Right now, the Select Board, if somebody isn't appointed within two months, a selectman takes over that position, or can take over that position. This is something else that hasn't been discussed today.
All right, any other discussion? Questions, comments? Guess it's time to vote. Article 32, all in favor of Article 32, signify by raising your card now, and opposed? The article passes, is approved. Article 33?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town amend Article 10, Section 1 of the Administrative Bylaws by striking the first three sentences and replacing them with the following language. Quote, "The police department shall consist of a chief of police, police lieutenant or lieutenants, police sergeant or sergeants, and such number of police officers as the Board of Selectmen shall deem necessary. The Selectmen shall have the right to increase or decrease the number of police lieutenants, police sergeants, and police officers from time to time as they deem necessary, and shall fix their compensation."
Second.
All right, Article 33 simply adds, I think, the position of police lieutenant to the current administrative bylaws. With a new chief coming on board soon, we're going to need that extra help, and by the way, that position is already included in the budget that you have approved a little while ago. Questions, comments, or discussions on it? There being none, all in favor, cards up, and opposed? Thank you, the article is approved. Article 34?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to eliminate pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 53, Section 121, the annual town caucus for the nomination of candidates for town office.
Second.
All right, Article 34 says it all right there. Eliminating the annual town caucus, which I don't think we've held in the last, at least, two years anyway, thanks to COVID. Questions, comments, or discussion? There being none, all in favor, cards up, and opposed? Thank you. The caucus is gone, we hope forever. Good. Article 35?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend Article 1, Section 13 of the Administrative Bylaws by eliminating the numerical requirement of a quorum of 200 voters at a town meeting, at an annual town meeting, and 150 voters at a special town meeting.
Second.
All right, this is an important article, all right, and it concerns the quorum at the annual town meeting and special town meetings. Now, it was tabled last year, and I really would like to hear it discussed tonight a little bit anyway, all right? The quorum was reduced in 2009, and that's the last time we actually voted on any type of quorum, 2009. Now, don't forget, the way the article is presented here, there would be no quorum, there's no numerical quorum. Whoever shows up, it's time to run the town's business. However, like any other article on this warrant, it can be amended too. So, questions, comments, discussion? You're not going to do what you did last year, are you?
Hi, I'm Mariah Hunt Legarre for Walden Terrace. Okay, so I tabled it last year because it was COVID, and we had to reduce the number to 20 people that could approve a town budget. I know everyone has their ways on thinking about this, but let me give you some information that I think is really important. We just voted a $71 million budget, and if you have two people, special interest people, people that come in and nobody else knows about it, and we're really bad about advertising the town meeting, although you were all here, which is great, but I don't think it's appropriate to have zero people, five people, or whoever shows up voting on a budget as large as ours with 13,000 or so people in town and 9,900 registered voters. So I would respectfully ask that we keep the quorum at what it is. I believe it's at 200 at this moment?
200 and 150.
Okay, I still think 200 is a lot lower than it should be, but 200 is what we voted on, and I say we should keep it.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, if I may?
Yes.
We don't have 200 people in this room right now, and we wouldn't have been able to have annual town meeting go forward if we didn't have special rules under the COVID to set the quorum at 20. The quorum for this meeting was 20, but there's still 180 people in this room, and no, at no time ever will five, 10, or 15 people be able to make decisions for you unless you voluntarily give them that ability by not showing up. The responsibility is on you, the voters, to be here to make sure there's enough people to give wisdom and guidance to the decision-making. And arbitrarily setting it at 100, 200, 300, I think it was 350 when I started my career playing in this building, and frequently we've had problems reaching a quorum, delaying the meeting, and the people in this room, the people that chose to take time out of their day or evening and come here had to sit here and sometimes go home because other people would not show up. So I respectfully request that you consider this, and if you find that it's a problem and doesn't work the way we're hoping it works, you can always put the quorum back in at the next town meeting and just show up with five or 10 or 15 people as a special interest group and pass that if this truly becomes a problem. Thank you.
Yes.
My question is the marketing of this meeting. I just found out about today's meeting today. So I can understand if you don't want to have a quorum, but for those of us who actually care about the town, there's got to be a better way of marketing this meeting, and I certainly support having a quorum.
Thank you. No, there's no doubt, we all need to work harder to get people here. I don't know if we have to give away prizes or what we have to do, but I know my history, believe me, and I, even in the 90s, sometimes it took four or five times to get people to come to a town meeting, four or five times. And come July 1, we're in trouble. In reality, your town employees are not getting paid, there's no budget. So anyway, that's my own personal, we had, yes, Robert. This is worth discussing, no matter what, it truly is, and again, it can be amended if you don't like the idea of no number at all.
It's Robert Epstein, 353 Church Street. I enjoy town meeting, I enjoy hearing everybody's opinion. Mr. Connolly and I rarely agree on things, I do agree with him this evening. I find it difficult, because everybody works hard, if you get an article on this, on the warrant, and it's used as a nuclear option, all of a sudden someone yells "quorum," and everybody deserves the ability to have their article heard. And if I take a couple hours out of my time and come as you do, I want to hear everything. And I don't want someone to call "quorum," that's it, and that just throws all that time away, and we've discussed this many times, and I don't think that 200, even though it's been reduced over time, works, because inevitably people leave as soon as their article's heard, people know that, and I've seen people who've worked very hard to get articles on here have to walk out without having it heard. So, Mr. Connolly, I'm with you. Mr. Moderator? Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Ed.
Want to come down?
Can I make a motion to amend Article 35?
You may do that.
So instead of eliminating the quorum, we just reduce it from 200 to 50 for a regular town meeting, and from 150 to 30 for special town meeting?
All right, one more time, I'm sorry. How many for a regular, annual town meeting?
50.
50 for town, and how many for special?
30.
Second.
Okay. So, I want to make sure I get this right, and, all right, the Article, where are we? All right, Article, Article 35 has been amended to read that a new quorum would be 50 people for an annual town meeting and 30 people for a special town meeting. All right? Now our discussion needs to focus on that amendment only. Questions, comments, or discussion about the amendment, 50 or 30? Yes?
Hi, yes, my name's Teresa Hisman, and I'm a little embarrassed because I am new to all of this, and I think that there's a lot of people in this town that are the same way. It's very hard to get information on when a meeting is, what's going on. I think that we need, instead of lowering the number especially that drastically, I think that we need to work on getting more people here, especially young people in our community.
I agree with that. Sure, I'm sorry.
Hi, David Britt, Elm Street. Yeah, I'm, you know, I agree, with Teresa on that part, you know, the 50 and 30 is much, is much too low. I mean, yeah, this year, we, you had what, 180, you said we got?
I'm not sure if we have that many, but we have over 100.
With poor advertisement. Years back, we approved in a town meeting for a better board out front to announce meetings. We have a pitiful sign that you have to be right up to the building in order to read that the town meeting is scheduled. I think we have to take the responsibility as a town to promote more, to get people out here. If we are going to change any limit, at least set it to something that we would typically get. Like, if we can get 180 tonight, and that's usually where it is where we get around 7:00, we usually add 180. Sometimes you wait till 8:00 to hit that 200, sometimes it's 7:30, but I think, I think sticking with the 200 is a good number for us. This past December, I found out about it, a day late, that there was a special town meeting where we allocated, what, $1.1 million?
I think it was.
$900,000 to school, we accepted a grant, put it added to the school budget without returning money back to free cash, which we should have done. So I think, you know, to protect us from situations like that and things sneaking up, especially special town meetings that we can't predict. We always can predict June, first Monday of June is there, it comes real quick and leaves, so you do tend to forget about it. So we need the things to remind us. So we need the things to remind us. But special town meetings are the real, are the real big thing that could really hurt us. Thank you.
Thank you. We will, yes. Yep.
Mr. Moderator, so looking at the quorum and getting a meeting started is one aspect of this. The second aspect of this, as was mentioned with the warrant articles, if there's anything that's further down the line once we start getting into the 40s and people start leaving after any warrant that pertains to them has been approved, they leave, then someone can call "quorum" and none of those articles are heard and were just outright dismissed. This happened a couple years ago where there was a business owner in town that had an article that was to be heard and right before that was to be heard, quorum was called. We didn't have enough and that was the end. That individual had to wait another year before they could have their article heard.
All right, there is an amendment on the floor. All right, so we probably need, if anyone wants to talk about that amendment, 50 and 30, does he want?
Well, I just had one other thing to add.
Okay, we need to vote on the amendment.
I just had one other thing to add. You know, if we're worried about the quorum at the end of the day, the end of meeting, put citizen petitions up front. Put the budget, after we've already discussed all the budget items, vote on the budget last. If people need, you know, we're going to have to keep people here to vote for the budget. And that way you get people here to vote for citizen petitions as well as funding the town.
There's no, Mike, go ahead, thank you. There's no doubt we need to do a better job of getting people here. And I need to do a better job of it too. No doubt.
Hello, Michael Jakonski, formerly a member of the Board of Selectmen, presently a member of the Conservation, I mean, the Finance Committee. But I was on the Conservation Commission and have been off and on the Board of Selectmen for 20 years and have sat up there on many, many occasions and had to leave without a town meeting because of lack of a quorum, to come back the next night and leave again because of the lack of a quorum. Things have been better lately, but it has on occasion been a huge problem. It is my understanding that towns with no quorum get better turnout than towns with quorums because when you have no quorum, everybody thinks all these jemokes that I disagree with will go down to Town Hall and vote in all these things that I disagree with. That's if there's no, so they show up. If there's a quorum, they think that the jemokes will be outvoted by the people who are required to be there by the quorum, so they don't go. At the beginning of the COVID pandemic, we set the quorum at 15 people for town meeting. Over 200 showed up. I think, I mean, personally, I would vote to end the quorum, but I think a reasonable compromise is the numbers that have been provided. And I think that that is an incentive for people to show up. And I think they will show up in greater numbers than if we keep the present numbers. Thank you very much.
All right, I think it's, I think it's time, yes. All right, I, this, I'm going to let her speak and then we, I was just about to move the question anyway, but go ahead.
Hi again, sorry, Mariah Hunt McGarret for Walden Terrace. Okay, so let's be real here. The people that are calling the quorum during town meetings are mostly the special interest people that don't want anything else done except their own articles. So if we're good at educating the people, like we should be about what your responsibility is when you come here, then maybe that wouldn't have happened. So the people that know what happens during town meetings take advantage of the people that don't. And the more people we have here asking questions, then that won't happen. So I feel really strongly about keeping it at 200, as you might guess, and I would like to not go down to 50 and 30. Thank you.
All right, we're voting on the amendment only right now. The amendment again is to change the number for 50 people for an annual town meeting and 30 people for a special town meeting. All right, that's all we're voting on right now. Not the article, the amendment. All in favor of the amendment, 50 and 30? Raise your cards now, please. And opposed? The article passes? Thank you. So, the, excuse me.
That's the amendment.
The amendment passes. Thank you. Okay, are we back to discussion? We're now on 50 and 30.
Mr. Moderator, I move the question.
All right, time to vote again. Here we go. We just approved the amendment, 50, 30. Now we're talking about the article, I'm sorry. Article 35 should now read 50 and 30. All in favor of a new quorum, 50, 30? Cards up and opposed. The article is approved. Thank you very much.
Mr. Moderator, I moved at the town vote to amend Article 35 of the administrative bylaws in the following sections. Current Section 1, all dogs should be kept on a leash or in the control of its owner at all times, 24 hours a day. Amended Section 1, all dogs must be under physical, actual physical restraint by way of a leash when on any property within the town, whether public or private, except on the premises of the owner or keeper or on the premises of another person with the knowledge and permission of such other person. Definition of restraint, an animal shall be considered under restraint if it is within the real property limits of its owner or keeper or on the premises of another person with the knowledge and express permission of such person as secured by a leash, lead, or under the direct control of the owner. Current Section 2, schedule of fines for unleashed dogs shall be $25 for the first offense and $50 for second offense and subsequent offenses. Amended Section 2, schedule of fines for unleashed dogs shall be $25 for the first offense, $50 for the second offense, and $100 for subsequent offenses. Current Section 4, the schedule of fines for a dog's owner failure to remove the dog's excrement from public property shall be $25 for the first offense and $50 for second offense and subsequent offenses. Amended Section 4, the schedule of fines for a dog owner's failure to remove the dog's excrement from public property shall be $25 for the first offense, $50 for the second offense, and $100 for subsequent offenses. Current Section 5, the fine for nonlicensed dogs shall be increased from $15 to $25. The amended section would read the fine for nonlicensed dogs shall be $50. This would also add a new Section 6 to read, it is the responsibility of all dog owners to be respectful of their neighbors. Between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m., dogs shall not be allowed to bark continuously for no more than 30 minutes. Between the hours of 9:00 p.m. and 9:00 a.m., dogs shall not be allowed to bark continuously for no more than 15 minutes. Schedule of fine for barking dogs shall be $25 for the first offense, $50 for the second offense, and $100 for the third and subsequent offenses. The third offense may be brought before the Board of Selectmen under Mass General Law Section, sorry, Chapter 140, Section 157, as a nuisance dog whereby the Board of Selectmen will determine further action as required by law.
Second.
All right, this article updates. I don't know if I should say this, our doggone laws? No. All right, it's not really as confusing as it looks. And Paul Wood is here and I can have him come up and explain, but let me give this a shot real quick here. The major change, I would say, is Section 1. And they did a great job of putting this right here in front of you. They have the current Section 1 and then the amended Section 1, what the new wording will be. And basically, Section 1 is about the definition of restraint, mostly. Section 2 and Section 4, all they did was just increase the penalties by adding the sentence, $100 for subsequent offenses. That's the only change. Section 5 increases the fine for nonlicensed dogs. It says it right there. And Section 6 is a brand-new law. Apparently, we do not have laws about barking. That has been a problem in the middle of the night kind of thing. And all of this is to bring this up to snuff with state regulations and what other cities and towns are doing. So, questions, comments, and discussions? Yes?
Noah Bombard, 206 Boylston Street. Mr. Moderator, my town meeting etiquette's a little fuzzy, but is it possible to make a motion to separate these sections into separate pieces that would be voted on at town meetings? Or does it have to be all?
I'm going to ask the council if you would. I don't think so, but I don't know. All right, so you would have to write it out and amend what is said here.
Amend it as separate sections?
Now, you, you're.
It would be the same language, just separate each section separately.
Certain sections, you could, your motion would just be delete those sections. That's what you're looking to do.
Let's say you have a problem with Section 6. You could say, I move to amend this, that there will be, you know, you're dropping Section 6 altogether. Something like that.
Okay, that wasn't what I was hoping to do, but.
What's your issue with this?
Sure. In that case, I would move to delete Section 1, which is the definition of restraints, I think.
So your motion is to delete the amended, the new language and leave it at all dogs shall be kept on a leash or in control of its owner at all times, 24 hours a day, which is what it reads now.
To what it reads now, yes.
And you, your, your motion is to leave it that way?
That's correct.
And nothing else?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Paul, you want to come up here and address this? This is Paul Wood? And he would know all about this?
First of all, let me state that one would hope I wouldn't have to give any of you or anybody in the town a fine. That's not my job. My job is to make the town a safe place for everybody. And in doing so, it seems the only way I can get compliance is if I make it expensive. Because basically, it's the same violators over and over and over. So I have to put teeth in the code to actually protect. And whether you're walking down the street and a gentleman's coming the other way, poor lady, when they come down, they have a dog. Under the current law, the dog doesn't have to be leashed. However, every dog is particular on who they like and dislike. And despite the fact that the owner might be there and 99% of the time, he may be able to control his dog with his voice. But believe me, I haven't seen a dog yet who didn't attack another dog because he didn't like the smell of it or because the other dog is a male, dominant male, and he's the dominant male and they're walking on a side sidewalk and they're both saying the same thing, "It's mine." That also pertains to people. If there's a particular, and I'm sure all of you know your pet, 99% of his decisions come from his nose. And if he doesn't like, if the wind's blowing toward him, he doesn't like you or the dog, no matter what the owner of that dog says to that dog, the dog doesn't hear him. So basically, between the protection of the public and some of the other articles in there are making us comply to state mandates. And we can be greater than, but not less than, the state. And we're less than in the articles.
Thank you. Any other? Any other discussion? Yes. No, there was a motion. I didn't hear a second. Yeah. I don't know, I didn't hear a second. Are you seconding it?
A lot seconded for purpose.
All right, fine. All right, no, I didn't hear, I didn't hear a second at all. So your, where is the? I'll be all right, I'm sorry. So your motion is to, and it now has been seconded, to simply get rid of the amended Section 1 here?
Correct.
Everything else stays the same?
Yes.
All right, is there any discussion on the amendment? Yes. We are now talking about the amendment, not the article. And I got to keep reminding myself of that too.
Yeah, I'm James White and I agree with striking that amendment, but there's also in Section 6, the time limits as well need to be revised. I don't think those are reasonable times. Construction workers can start earlier. I get up and go to work. I walk, I walk my dogs. And I go to work early in the mornings, so my animals are up. And 9 o'clock laws, just, they're not reasonable. I think we should discuss a more appropriate time, something more in line with, like I say, a construction worker can start jackhammering up in front of my house at 7 o'clock and I can't let my dog out? And I don't think that's reasonable. So I'd like to discuss something, some compromise in that time. I agree that dogs shouldn't be barking all the time, but we can do better than that.
All right, so we better do one amendment at a time anyway. So you're saying your amendment is to what? Drop the new Section 6?
Actually. I don't want to drop the section entirely. It needs to be revised. I think the times are unreasonable. The 9:00 a.m. to 9:00, 9:00 p.m. to 9:00 a.m.
Okay. Thank you for that and we'll discuss that in a second. Let's get to the first one. All right. So this is, we're now on the amendment, the first amendment that he was talking about. All right, and we're going to drop the amended Section 1. Is there any other discussion on that amendment of dropping completely the amended Section 1?
Am I able to explain that further?
Sure, why not? One more time.
You know, I moved to town 20 years ago. At the time, I had a dog, Indiana. We lived up on Church Street. My first job was working down at the item. He used to walk with me every day to work. We'd walk over to Betty Jane's. He'd sit outside the sidewalk. You know, if I told him to sit, he sat. If I told him to lay down, he laid down. If a squirrel walked by, he might look. I appreciated at the time that I lived in a town that had the type of bylaw that allowed for people who have exceptional dogs like that to be able to go to a park, throw a frisbee, walk them somewhere without being a problem. And I knew at the time that if my dog ever was not in my control and got loose or attacked somebody or went after somebody, I would be in violation of the current town bylaw that we have now. So I kind of feel like the leash law is always a way to try to solve something that we already have the ability to solve. If somebody's dog is roaming and, you know, I've had a dog since then that will roam. That's my wife's dog, by the way. So, you know, she has to be leashed and we leash her everywhere we go because she's a gentle dog, but she'll run off to the neighborhood if we let her out. So that's my thinking behind this, that we already have a bylaw that addresses this. I'm in favor of the other stuff on here, raising fines. Enforcement, I think, is very important. But this one particular thing, I feel like we already have something on the books that works. Thank you.
All right, I think it's time to vote. We're voting on the amendment, which is to to delete the amended Section 1 only. That's all we're talking about, Section 1. All in favor of deleting the amended Section 1 as printed in your warrant? Cards up, please. And opposed? All right. Thank you. So that means we're back. That was defeated. That was defeated. So, uh, the amended section is still there, Section 1 is still there. Now, the person who was talking about, uh, what was it? 6. And where did that gentleman go? I'm sorry. So now, if you have something you wanna, time or something, let's change that right now and vote on it. I knew we'd spend a lot of time on dogs tonight, I just knew.
Yeah, the, the Section 6, you know, that 9 a.m., I think is too late in the day. 9 p.m. in the evening, that, that's probably alright, but it's more in line with, you know, a noise complaint. If I have a party, or I'm, the neighbors have their radio up, they can leave their radios up till 10, 11 o'clock at night, I'm not sure what the exact time is. I, I think we should run the dog noise at the same times that those are at, not making separate rules for a dog.
So what is your, what is your, uh, change?
I propose to make it 7 a.m. and 11 p.m. 11 p.m. to 7 a.m.
7 to when?
11 p.m. to 7 a.m.
To what?
7 a.m.
7 a.m. And this is in the, uh, the second line there? That you're talking about?
Correct.
So the new Section 6, alright? Second line, the amendment is, instead of what? 9 to 9?
9 to 9, it would be 11 to 7.
You're saying 11 to 7. 7 a.m. to 11 p.m. That's... Third line.
We're gonna have to change both lines.
Gotcha, sorry.
24 hours.
So, okay.
Yeah, the second and third lines.
Third line, new Section 6. Alright, and instead of 9 to 9, it's 11 to 7. That is the amendment. Is that all set?
11 p.m. to 7 a.m.
Alright, that's your amendment, fine.
Correct.
Is there a second to that, uh, uh, second? So line 3, instead of 9 to 9, the amendment says 11 p.m. to 7 a.m. Third line. So, questions, comments, or discussion on the amendment? You're all set, I think, sir? Yes? I didn't demand...
Just, just, I think I wanna follow through the clear on, on line 2, where it says 7 a.m., where it's gonna be, where it says 9 a.m., it's gonna be 7 a.m. to 11 p.m. as well. Right, where it says 9 to 9, at the, on the first instance, a.m.
We have to adjust that time, too.
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure it was clear.
Can you tell I love dogs? No, I'm sorry. Um, so, yeah, you can do whatever you want during those times. Alright, so, how are we changing this? Gimme the hours, please. The third line is 11 to 7, so what is the second line?
7 to 11.
7 to 11, go ahead. Is that covered? Sorry. Go ahead, somebody else had a tough time. Go ahead, sir, I'm sorry.
So I'm hoping for, uh, so Alan Pratt, Chestnut Street. I'm hoping for some clarification on lines 2 and 3. It looks like it's written with a double negative in each of those two lines. It says, "Dogs shall not be allowed to bark continuously for no more than 30 minutes." So, isn't that a double negative? One of those words should come out, either "not" or...
I don't wanna wordsmith this thing to death, I think we've already done that, but, um, it means after 30 minutes, you got a problem, right?
Right. So I think it should say, "Dogs should not be allowed to bark continuously for more than 30 minutes."
Oh, for more than 30, okay.
So, I...
I think, I think that might be wordsmithing, to be honest.
Okay.
I think, that can be worked out, I...
I just don't want it to get, uh, used against...
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just...
Yes?
That's been bugging me since it started. He's correct. It is a double negative, the no's have to go out. Read it. Where's the English teachers? No English teachers here tonight?
We need an English teacher. The most important thing is the time.
So, 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 we're already on another amendment? So, we're already on another amendment, but I would like to amend it to remove "no" in line 2, and "no" in line 4.
Second.
And then it's correct. But you get a vote in the other amendment first.
Okay. Hold on.
Yep, I got it right here.
Alright, wait a second. So we're, we're still on the amendment?
Sure.
Alright, we're, we're still on Section 6, and now, the amendment is, on the second line, 7 to 11. This is a lot like the chickens article from a few years ago, isn't it? 7 to 11, and the third line is 11 to 7, right? Everybody agree with that? Okay, I think I understand that, too. Any more discussion on that? Alright, all in... Oh, there is, go ahead. Is this the chickens?
Mike Osborne, 180 Main Street. So right now, is the amendment's currently written, it's from 9 a, 9 p.m. to 9 a.m. as far as the overnight. Moving this to 11, I think could cause serious problems for a lot of people. There are people that have to, they're going to bed at 9:30, 10 o'clock, 10:30, they gotta get up too early to go to work the next day. Imagine having a dog barking out your window at, for 15 minutes, and it's gonna be far more than 15 minutes before anything changes. So, the idea that, you know, we, well, that any dog owner frankly would let their dog bark in, at night for 15, 20 minutes, really is shame on them, quite frankly. But, as our animal patrol officer said, we have to start putting teeth into things to make sure people start complying. I strongly should suggest that we do not change these hours.
Alright, thank you. Any other questions, uh, any questions, comments, or discussion on the amendment? If not, let's, let's vote on this damn thing. So again, line 2, 7 to 11, and, uh, line 3, 11 to 7. If you don't think those hours are appropriate, then you vote "no" on this amendment. If you like the new times, you vote "yes." All in favor of the amendment? 7 to 11 and 11 to 7. Hands up, please. And opposed? Alright, that is defeated. The amendment is defeated. So we're back, I think now, to the original article, are, are we not?
Seems so.
I think we are, finally, okay.
Mr. Moderator, I've moved we amend Section 6, um, to make the correction and removing, to, to now read, "Dogs shall not be allowed to bark continuously for more than 30 minutes, and shall not be allowed to bark continuously for more than 15 minutes in the, during the p.m."
For more than, okay. Alright, everyone got that? Under Section 6, we're getting rid of two no's. That's what we're doing. We needed an English teacher here. Alright, or an item reporter, or a writer reporter. So with that amendment, uh, I don't think we need to, to go into the mechanics of English. All in favor of that amendment, just striking the two no's? Raise your card now, please. And opposed? Thank you, that has been changed, too.
Mr. Moderator, I move the question?
Yes, the questions moved, let's do this. Goggone thing again, man in my... Article 36, it's time to vote. All those in favor of Article 36? Raise your card now, please. And opposed? The article is, uh, passed, is approved. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Moderator, I moved at the town vote to amend the administrative bylaws by adding a, uh, new article regarding illicit discharge detection and elimination, and that we dispense with the reading of the balance. I tried to find that paragraph here, and, um, okay.
No, that's fine.
Second.
Alright, this is another one of those articles that, uh, it's bark is worse than it's bite. Anyway, I'm gonna try to explain it, uh, just the way I understand it, in very, very general terms, and then if, if that is not sufficient, by all means, you have the right to, to question this, and we'll probably have Chris McGowan up here to explain things. Alright, Article 37 and 38, they have to be done, obviously separately, but Article 37 is, is all new language, alright? The town of Clinton hired a consultant to update our bylaws in line with the DEP. Something we have to do, no doubt about it, okay? So, locally, no one did that. A professional consultant did that work. That is the new language. It doesn't replace anything. Nothing like hidden here, okay? This is all new, Article 37. And I'll hold off on Article 38. So, any questions, comments, or discussion on Article 37? I'm sure Chris McGowan could explain every page to you if he, if we wanted him to. There being none, all in favor of Article 37? Hands up and opposed? Thank you, the article is approved.
Mr. Moderator, I moved at the town vote to amend the administrative bylaws by adding a new section on municipal separate storm sewer system, uh, and to dispense with the reading of the balance of the article.
Second.
Alright, Article 38 is very similar to Article 37, still done by a, a professional consultant, um, for the town of Clinton. But this one updates what we had before, and again, all to come up to the, the state level and the DEP requirements. That's what all of this is about. Questions, comments, or discussion? There being none, all in favor? Cards up and opposed? Thank you, the article is approved. Article 39?
Mr. Moderator, I moved at the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw of the town of Clinton by deleting Section 4330, prohibited accessory structures, and amending Section 4320, permitted accessory structures, by inserting the following. Uh, Section 4325, not more than one Conex box, steel storage container, cargo box, or similar temporary structure, subject to the following restrictions, uh, listed in the warrant, and to dispense with the specifics there.
Second.
Alright, I was gonna say, any questions, comments, or discussion? But Phil's already here, that's good. He read my mind.
Phil, I'm the Community and Economic Development Director, and you'll have to forgive me, I'm here because it's required by law that the planning board make a report to the town meeting of their public hearing. On June 1st, the planning board held a public hearing on this proposed amendment to the zoning bylaw, as well as the next few articles. At that meeting, the, the planning board, um, in light of testimony presented at that public hearing, voted to table this article, and I'm, and it, it corresponds with that action, I'm making a motion to table this article.
Second.
Alright, the sponsoring group itself has asked us to table this article. Questions, comments, or discussion? There being none, all in favor of tabling Article 39? And opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, I moved at the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw of the town of Clinton by amending the following sections as follows. Uh, Section 5150, any, sorry, waiver, any parking requirements set forth herein may be reduced upon the granting of a waiver by the planning board if during a site plan review, the board finds that the reduction does not be consistent with public health and safety, or that the reduction promotes a public benefit, uh, and to dispense with the remainder of the details.
Second.
Alright, I know this ties in the parking requirement with the site plan review, but Phil, you wanna explain?
Sure. Uh, on June 1st, the planning board held a public hearing, uh, to discuss this article. Planning board voted to recommend it to town meeting. This article is, in fact, a housekeeping item. At the fiscal, the 2014 town meeting, this, 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 uh, town meeting gave, um, the board the authority, uh, to waive certain requirements of the zoning bylaw through a process known as a waiver. The planning board had already had that authority through a different process called special permit. Uh, we created a new section, 9437, which gave the planning board the right to do it through waiver, but we didn't reference that back in the individual section of the bylaw, the change in language, some of saying "may by special permit" to "may by waiver," and that's what this is doing.
Any other discussion on Article 40? There being none, all in favor? Cards up and opposed? Thank you, the article is approved.
Mr. Moderator, I moved at the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw of the town of Clinton by eliminating Section 5325 sandwich signs and inserting language, uh, listed in the warrant, and dispense with the remainder of the copy.
Second.
Article 41 deals with sandwich board signs, which by the way, are prohibited in town now, and this is an attempt to, uh, obviously regulate the size, the location, the use of them, whatever. Phil?
On June 1st, the planning board held a public hearing. Uh, they voted to recommend this article to the town meeting, and as Terry says, this is, uh, proposes to provide some regulations having to do with, uh, sandwich signs, A-frame signs, which are actually currently forbidden or prohibited in our bylaw. They regulate the size, which is not more than seven square feet. Uh, they require that they, uh, their, uh, permit be obtained from the Board of Selectmen, who regulate sidewalks and roadways in town. Uh, they can't, uh, limit, uh, clear path on the sidewalk to less than ADA requirement. They have to remove in the evening, they can't block vehicular traffic in any way, they can't block snow removal in any way.
Alright, Article 41, any other discussion? There being none, all in favor? And opposed? Thank you very much. The article passes.
Mr. Mo, 42? Mr. Moderator, I moved at the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw of the town of Clinton by amending the following sections as follows. Section 7350, parking, sufficient and appropriate space or additional parking spaces shall be constructed to serve existing and new residential units in accordance with the requirements for multifamily dwellings in Section 5000 of this zoning bylaw.
Second.
Alright, Article 42, we're almost at the end, folks. Article deals with parking regulations.
Uh, June 1st, the planning board voted to recommend this article to town meeting. This again is a little bit on the order of housekeeping. In 2019, town meeting, um, created a multifamily dwelling bylaw, um, which allows for the conversion of, of houses that meet a certain criteria, to, to more, to two or three units. Um, in that, in that bylaw, there is a parking requirement. The language of the bylaw was not as explicit as we would have liked to have it, um, in, in articulating that parking needs to be required for new units as well as existing units. It was a little bit interdetermined in the bylaw as it was written, so this just makes it clear that if you proposed to make this conversion, you're before the planning board for a special permit, you have to provide parking for the new units as well as the existing units.
Any other questions, comments, or discussion? There being none. Article 42, all in favor? Cards up and opposed? Thank you, the article is approved.
Mr. Moderator, I moved at the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw of the town of Clinton by deleting Section 3.2.3, existing lots in its entirety.
Second.
Uh, on June 1st, the planning board held a public hearing on this article, and as a result of it, uh, testimony made at that public hearing, the planning board voted to table this article, um, and so, on their behalf, I'm, I'm making this same motion to town meeting.
Second.
Is that tabled?
Tabled.
Okay, thank you. Alright, uh, again, the sponsoring group wishes to table this article. All in favor of tabling? And opposed? Article number 43 is tabled. Two more articles to go, folks. Here we go.
Uh, Mr. Moderator, I move we table Article 44.
Um, Article 44 is, um, tabled, is there a second?
As a point of explanation, Mr. Moderator, the Board of Trustees of the Bigelow Libraries and, uh, elected board, when, when I voted to put this on the warrant, I was, it was under my understa... Sorry, when, uh, the Board of Trustees of the Libraries elected board, and when I voted to put this on the warrant, it was under the understanding that they had discussed and agreed, um, to support this. Uh, I was misunderstood, so I would just like to withdraw my support.
Okay, uh, is it, is there, uh, a second to tabling the article? Second, alright. Um, okay, um, yep. Well, we have somebody here, so... Alright, Gloria, if you wanna speak on that, we do have a motion to table, and, and if you have a view, and there's opposing view, we'll hear it, and then we'll vote to table.
Yeah, yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator, and thank you, everyone. I know this has been a very long meeting. Um, I, um, I am in favor of tabling Article 44, and I, oh, Gloria Parkinson, 90 Hattie Avenue. Tonight, I ask that the meeting votes to table this article, not on the basis of a proposed change to the library's bylaws, but on the basis of a deeper concern. The relationship of the select board to other town elected boards. I personally don't understand why the select board placed this article that pertains to changing the library's bylaws on the warrant without prior consulting with the full elected Board of Library Trustees. Full disclosure, I am a member of the Board of Library Trustees. Tonight, however, I speak only as myself, since the full Board of Trustees has not discussed the matter during a board meeting conducted according to the open meeting law of... of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The behavior of the select board toward another elected town board causes me deep concern because of what article 44 represents. Should this article not be tabled, and should those gathered here tonight pass article 44, a precedent would be set with potential ramifications for the workings of all elected town boards. Going forward, no elected town boards would be able to claim protection from the select board doing to those boards without prior consultant, consultation, what it has done to the library board via article 44. I firmly believe that people of goodwill serve on our towns, boards, committees, commissions, et cetera. I firmly believe we all endeavor to do the best we can for our community and for those who elect us. Sometimes we do better than at other times. Sometimes we don't all agree, but we try. That's our town's wonderful small D democracy. So although the select board has the legal right to place articles on the town meeting warrant, I fear article 44 is an overreach with the potential to undermine principles we hold dear in Clinton. So to protect all town boards, I ask you to vote in support of tabling article 44. Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes. Got to hear the opposing?
Good evening. Russ Grady from Wilson Street, and I'm also a trustee of the library. I'm Russ Grady, and I'm a trustee at the Bigelow Free Public Library. This article that they're talking about started off as a citizen's petition. Someone brought to me there, to my attention, that when reviewing the bylaws, a couple of years back, the library board put a few things on to clean up the bylaws in town of the library itself, and one thing they noticed that they didn't change was the six members, two to be elected each year in a cycle of two, two, and two. The Board of Selectmen, the school committee, the planning board, the zoning board of appeals, Parks and Recreation, all of the boards in this town elected are five-member boards, with the exception of the Board of Health who has three members, and the assessors who have three members. And they have five because it doesn't, it takes away the opportunity to have a tie vote. And that's what's happened. If they decided this Sunday to open from noon to 3:00 and give out free ice cream to the children, and three people said yes, and three people said no, it would be defeated. In Robert's Rules of Order, a tie vote is, the motion doesn't pass, it fails. So unfortunately, the majority didn't defeat that free ice cream for the kids. And neither, you, you can't gain a majority with an even number. And the state law says that the, you can have as many trustees as you want, except they have to be able to be divided by three. So that's why Clinton has six. I honestly believe that five is, is plenty. And this coming election cycle, Karen Nugent will be up for reelection for two, three years, and I will be. And the reason this thing was brought before everybody, it's been discussed with other town officials, past officials, is it's good government. Three people on the Board of Trustees should not be able to be defeated, not by a majority, but by a tie. So the simple request is, in the next election cycle, I would not run against another trustee. So no one's going to be eliminated from their position. It simply improves the fact that everybody's vote counts. You can disagree, and it can be five to two, or, excuse me, uh, three to two, you know? But this three to three thing is crazy. No other organization would function with a tie executive committee making decisions. So I'd ask, it's on the warrant, I'd just like to see a, a vote to support the principle of going to five, and in the coming year, I think it should be done. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I could, I could use that free ice cream right about now, Russ, I think, but... All right, we've heard, uh, yes?
Hi, Wendy Neal again. I'm also a library trustee, and first I agree with Gloria. It wasn't brought to our trustee meeting, and as Sean Carrigan said, um, it, I agree with him that we should table it because we never had a discussion at our own meeting. But if it isn't tabled, um, we, I have been a trustee for six years, and that's 12 meetings a year. I tend to go to like 15 a year because we have some extra meetings, and I've been on subcommittees, so I'm going to round up to 15 a year. That means I've been to 90 meetings, and we've had one tie. It's never been an issue. Just because other boards have different numbers doesn't mean that we have to be like other boards. I, it's amazing to me that everyone would want to, um, change a state law over the number of trustees. We've literally never had an issue. Again, 90 meetings and we've had one tie. And if we did move it to five, we've also had a lot of time, one, one of the years that I was a trustee, we had someone who was sick and they couldn't make a lot of the meetings for at least half the year. So, um, if we were five and we had a sick person, then we're down to four, and that means we can have a tie in that case as well. We, our last month, we didn't have someone come to our meeting, so we ran off of five. Again, if we were starting with five and that person didn't come to our meeting, we'd be four, and that could be a tie. So there's always the potential for a tie anyway, but like I said, over the course of six years, 90 meetings, we've had one tie. Thank you.
Thank you. One more time, and we're, we're voting after this, without a doubt.
The citizens petition was signed by over 20 residents of Clinton taxpayers, but also by three trustees. So three seated trustees now signed that petition and requested this be here. So thank you.
Thanks, Russ. All right, it's time to vote. We're voting now on tabling. If, if, um, you agree with that, and there'll be no more discussion, then, then that's that, it will be tabled. If you disagree, then we'll keep going with the discussion. All right, all in favor of tabling article 44 for the time being? And opposed? All right, the article passes, it is, it is tabled. All right, we have one more.
Mr. Moderator, I move to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the general court for special legislation to authorize the Board of Selectmen to grant a chapter 138, section 15, all alcohol packer store license to Rana Inc. for premises located at 220 High Street, Clinton, Mass., notwithstanding the limitation on the number of such licenses which may be granted or act on anything thereon.
Second.
All right, this is an article which allows a package store at 220 High Street, uh, now selling beer and wine, to be granted a full liquor license. Harold, how are you? Nice to see you.
Nice to see you, Mr. Moderator, thank you. Harold Naughton, 10 Nelson Street, and just let me say, it's nice to see everyone here. Give yourself a round of applause for coming out on a night like this at the end of the pandemic. And, uh, whoever I didn't have the opportunity back in January, I want to extend a personal thanks for all of your friendship and support over 26 years in my previous job. I was asked by my friends, the Patel family who run Papacolli's', to step up on their behalf and speak to this article. Uh, they've been in this town for 13 years running that store. Uh, I think just about everybody in this hall has been in that store, see what kind people they are. They want to be able to expand their business. They have a, an agreement in principle with the owner of the building to be able to double their floor space if this gets passed. So one, it helps out with the, um, the, the continued enhancements that our town has worked so hard on, on that end of High Street. I know for years when I had my office there, I was really looking forward to the buildup there, and here it is finally coming to fruition after many years of hard work. You have a family that's bought into that, that wants to be helpful, wants to be part of this. It will double their floor space, hopefully create some new jobs. It will create more opportunity for consumers in the town of Clinton. They tell me that every day people come in and ask, uh, for a bottle of Tito's or, or Jameson, for some of us, I might like that. Uh, and it's not without precedence, just in my last term in the House, uh, the last couple of years, we did this, uh, threw this forum, uh, for both brothers, uh, down at the, at the end of, across from Shaw's and, um, and, uh, the other place, uh, Next Door, uh, Next Door Deli or Next Door Market. So I would just suggest that you've got a local family here who wants to improve themselves, wants to improve the business climate on High Street, uh, and, uh, and continue to grow and be part of the community. I'd ask you to support this article on their behalf. And again, thank you, thank you, Mr. Uh, Mr. Moderator. I almost said Mr. Speaker out of habit, but Mr. Moderator, um, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Harold. Any other discussion on this? We're simply doing a, a beer and wine license to a full liquor license.
Mike Osborne, 180 Main Street. Uh, my question is, will this in any way impact the ability of, um, us to expand the number of restaurants in town that would have liquor license? Does it have no impact at all?
I do not know that. I don't think so. Different type of license altogether.
All right, very good, thank you.
Thank you. We set to vote on this? Great. All in favor of article 45, hands up and opposed. Thank you. The article is, uh, accepted. Thank you very much.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second. All in favor? Hi, thank you so much for coming out. Next Monday, Election Day, 7:00 AM right here to 8:00 PM. Thank you again.